Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order, and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The city of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning request, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the city 2015 land use plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. I'll start by reading the consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the August 1st 2007 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at 2420 South Summit Avenue, East 33rd Street, and Norton Avenue. From the RS2 Residential District to the S Institutional District, petition number 2007-05-13, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item four, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at Sioux Falls Regional Airport, from the AG Agriculture District to the AP Airport District, petition number 2007-06-10, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item five, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at North Ebenezer, from the RS2 Residential District to the C4 Plan Commercial District, O General Office District, RD Residential District, and the RS2 Residential District, petition number 2007-0625A, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item six is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at North Dubuque Avenue and East Madison Street, from the AG Agriculture District to the RS2 Residential District, petition number 2007-08-09, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item seven, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at North Dubuque Avenue, East Madison Street, from the AG Agriculture District to the RS2 Residential District, petition number 2007-08-10, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item nine, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at Toma Road and East 75th Street, from the RS2 Residential District and the RC Recreation Conservation Districts, to the RS2 Residential and the RC Recreation Conservation Districts, petition number 2007-08-24, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Number nine, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at West 85th Street, west of Western, from the AG Agriculture District to the -- and here's a change from the agenda. It's -- it should read RS2 instead of RS1. So Agriculture District to the RS2 Residential District and the Windswept Timber Estates Plan Development District, petition number 2007-0828, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item 10, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a major amendment, petition number 2007-08-23, to Chapter 15.45.070, Plan Development Districts, Taylor PD at Marion Road, south of 57th Street, allowing changes in land use as reflected in revised sub-area regulations and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item 11, conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow telecommunications tower at East Rice Street and I-29. Item 12, a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at West Wall Street and South Lindell Avenue. Item 13 is a conditional use permit in the O Office District for apartment dwelling -- two apartment dwellings on the first floor at 600 West Wall Street. Item 14 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District for an on-sale alcohol establishment as an accessory use to a restaurant at 2717 West 41st Street. Item 15 is a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow a four-unit residential building at 223 North Van Eppes Avenue. Item 16 is a final development plan in Subarea A, Canterbury Heights PD Plan Development District, to construct two and four unit condominiums and clubhouse with a pool at East Madison Street and North Dubuque Avenue. Item 17 is a final development plan in Subarea B, Thielen Business Center PD Plan Development District, to construct a daycare center at North Louise Avenue, south of Cayman Street. Item 18 is a final development plan in Subarea D, River Crossing Plan Development District, to allow construction of a medical office building at 5125 River Crossing Place. Item 19 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of legacy addition at Madison Avenue and Marion Road. Item 20, resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Prairie Gardens addition Phase IV at 49th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Mariah Meadows addition Phase IV at West 82nd Street and Beal Avenue. Item 22 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan, Timber Oak addition Phase IV at West 85th Street and Pinnacle Avenue. Item 23 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Windswept Meadows addition Phase IV at west of Western Avenue, south of 85th Street. And item 24 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Timber Oak Estates addition at West 85th Street, west of Western Avenue.
Good talk.
Is there any objections from the audience to any item on the consent agenda?
I don't have -- excuse me, my name is Shawna Gold. I'm representing planning staff this evening. I don't have any changes other than items 21 through 23. It looks like we have some typographical errors. None of those are Phase IV. They're all just -- the Phase IV should be eliminated from 21, 22, and 23 on those agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, 21, 22, 23, removing Phase -- the words Phase IV from all of those. Anyone in the audience care to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? All right, anyone on the planning staff -- or Planning Commission care to move any of the items to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like item number 20. I'd like to visit with staff about a couple points, and I have number 20.
Okay, so item number 20 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Prairie Gardens addition at 49th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. We'll move that one to the first item on our regular agenda. Any other ones that need to be moved? If not, is there a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
I'd make the motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the consent agenda with the one change.
I second that.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The consent agenda -- revised consent agenda has passed. And so for our regular agenda, we will hear item number 21st, and then item 26 has been deferred, which is a resolution amending the future land use map as part of the Sioux Falls 2015 Growth Management Plan, petition number 2007-08-16, at Northwest Benson Road and Marion Road, from the single-family and the multi-family future land uses to an allocation of commercial office institutional and multi-family future land use. That has been deferred by the applicant until next meeting. So with the addition of item 20 and the deferral of item 26, is there a motion to approve the revised regular agenda?
I'll move for approval on the regular agenda with item number 20 being the first item.
Second?
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The revised regular agenda has been approved. So our first item tonight will be item number 20, which has moved from the consent agenda. Item 20 again is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Prairie Gardens addition at 49th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Staff report.
Okay. The parcel is located at 53rd Street and South Sycamore Avenue. The applicant is proposing a major change in street pattern and adding land area -- excuse me, the -- just changing the street pattern of 53rd Street. The preliminary plan does include all the information. City engineering has recommended approval of the plan, and that happened preceding or following, excuse me, the staff recommendation sent to you in the mail. It does conform with the 2015 Growth Management Plan for single-family residential, and because the preliminary plan does offer coordination of urban infrastructure and fosters efficient and orderly urban growth, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Shawna, thank you for that report. Last month, this was an item that was deferred. I think we had an adjacent landowner that had some concerns about street alignment. I received a call this evening about between 5:00 and 5:30. I think we were all under the impression that the street alignment had been resolved. His question to me, he would not like to hold this up for this current developer.
Okay.
If there were to be a change in this street alignment in the next couple, three months, what is the process that they would have to go through to do that? And is that a doable thing?
There is an administrative review depending -- it depends on the amount of change that there is. If you slide a road 10 feet one way or another, that would be considered a minor amendment to the preliminary plan, and that's handled by administration through just planning staff, planning director, and also the city engineer. So that would be the process if it's a minor change.
If it were a major?
If it was a major change, it would have to come back as another preliminary plan.
Would have to come back by the current petitioner?
Correct. If it was a major amendment, and ordinarily those major amendments are if they are changing the location of the streets dramatically, or if they're adding land area to a preliminary plan.
However.
Jeff?
Jeff, I think, would like to comment.
All right.
Any more questions for me?
Thank you, Shawna.
Jeff Schmidt, City Staff. However, why it was deferred last month was we require preliminary plans to line up with existing preliminary plans. And there's an existing preliminary plan in the south, and so we deferred last month to line up with the existing preliminary plan that's in place. So now if we approve this one tonight, and it's lining up with the existing preliminary plans in the neighborhood, and another one comes forward and changes, then the one that you're approving tonight is the existing approved preliminary plan.
So are you saying that at that point, it cannot be changed?
If this applicant suggests to move it forward and come back to approve it.
If this applicant?
Correct.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, is it a safe assumption that this would come back as a final development? Wouldn't this come back as a final development?
Shawna?
No, this particular area is not -- is in a conventional zoning district. It's not in a planned development district. Prairie Gardens is zoned primarily RS2 residential, which is a single-family zoning district. There would be required final plans, which is engineering document that describes construction of the infrastructure streets, where the pipes go, that kind of thing.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to talk to the petitioner?
We're gonna get him up here.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eric Willardson with Willardson on Engineering, here representing the Prairie Gardens addition. You want to first?
Eric, we deferred this plan last month because of some debate between streets lining up. I've been led to believe that you have -- or the -- one of the adjacent landowners, and you as the petitioner have an agreement to work with this particular landowner on a re-street alignment in the next few months. Is that true?
That's correct, Ken. We do have kind of an ongoing agreement with the property owner to the south, as well as engineering staff, park department staff. There is a plan for an access from Harmonon Park to 57th Street in the future that's located to the east of this property, on land that these developers own. It's also met with owner of the property kind of to the southeast of this, where Dubuque Avenue, which will be the access point to 57th Street, and that was decided by engineering staff in a meeting of all the adjacent property owners on both sides of 57th Street this week. So I think all those issues have been worked out. We're simply trying to move Prairie Gardens forward. This was a change to a previously approved plan for Prairie Gardens, all the way to final plans. In fact, we had construction plans that were approved, a change to essentially accommodate the development to the south since that's changed ownership. So I think everyone's in agreement. Planning's in agreement. Engineering staff's in agreement. So I would hope with that, we can move forward.
With the understanding that you've still got a line of communication open up with that neighborhood?
Absolutely.
And if staff, engineering agreed on a different alignment, you would start the process to re-change this preliminary?
Right. And their personnel were at those meetings and have agreed to the same.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, commission action.
I'd move for approval of item number 20?
I second.
Just a motion, a second. Any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 20 is recommended for approval. Our next item on the regular agenda will be item 25, a resolution amending the future land use map as part of the city of Sioux Falls 2015 Growth Management Plan, petition number 2007-08-08, at North Dubuque Avenue and East 6th Street, from the single-family future land use to an allocation of multi-family future land use. Staff report.
Thank you. I'd like to note that the Planning Commission does have in their information packet the petitioner's information and comparing the 2015 Growth Management Plan goals, objectives, and policies and comments. As a proposed amendment should be considered on its own merits using eight criteria as a guide, rather than reading all eight. I'm gonna go through a few of them here. First of all, whether the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, policies, and overall intent of the text of the comprehensive plan. Included in the comprehensive plan are multi-family land use location and design criteria, which would include properties that are adjacent to arterials and near major commercial, institutional, or employment centers, and a provision for usable open space based on the project's size. Another criteria that we use is whether the proposed amendment achieves an arrangement of activities which promote harmonious interaction and minimizes land use conflicts surrounding the subject property. As indicated by the applicant, the future land use plan does indicate multi-family residential land uses to the south. There is a drainage way which is incorporated into the plan to offer an arrangement of activities which would promote harmonious interaction. In conclusion, we consider whether the proposed amendment creates an undue impact on surrounding neighborhoods, whereas the proposed development should be consistent with physical characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood and improves the living environment and quality of life for city of Sioux Falls. Staff does note that this would add multi-family of approximately 11 acres, and changing that 11 acres from single-family to multi-family, and it's primarily the area south of an existing drainage way between 6th Street and the natural drainage way. Because the application accommodates future land uses, and the proposed development should be consistent with physical characteristics of surrounding neighborhoods, staff does recommend approval of the future land use amendment. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Justin Banworth, and I represent Parapasou Companies, 4999 France Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55410. As Shawna had stated, we would request that you guys consider a future land use amendment based on the natural barrier that exists between our proposed single-family development and that area south of the wetland as a multi-family use. Are there any questions from Commissioners?
Questions, Justin?
I have a question regarding the transition. There appears to be single-family on the west side.
That's correct.
How would that transition from single-family to multi-family? And what type of multi-family would that be on the east side?
We haven't completely determined the type of multi-family. I did have a neighborhood meeting with all of the residents along Dubuque there, as well as the ones that are directly adjacent along 6th Street to kind of inform them of our plans. Right now, we're exploring the possibility of some -- a townhome product, possibly a four or an eight-unit product, so. That's kind of what we've been looking at, and I didn't have a lot of objection from any of the residents because as we went through that, we explained that it isn't going to be, you know, a Section 8 housing development primarily. It'll be well-done, and we've also proposed to kind of dress up that greenway, and we've looked at the possibility of running a trail through there. So you provide amenities to those residents, and we've looked at other, you know, options for the park in that area as well to possibly provide some sort of transition, so.
So when the option of a fourplex or an eightplex was presented to the neighbors, they did not have any objections?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Was it presented as a rental-type property or?
We have not determined whether it'll be rented -- rental or for sale. And the residents are aware of that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right, I don't see any, so is there commission action? Item 25.
Mr. Chair, if we could, I'd like to have staff come up and answer a quick question. This is Shawna, a future land use amendment. The next time we see this, it'll be a rezone.
Correct.
And then a subdivision preliminary plan after that.
Or at the same time, the rezoning and preliminary plan may run together.
So we'll have a couple of opportunities to see just exactly what that detail is before it gets to.
Right.
And obviously, there would be some more neighbor input as part of that process, too.
Right. There'll be additional public hearings for the rezoning and the preliminary plan.
Mr. Chair, with that in mind, I would make the motion to approve the future land use amendment.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion, and a second. Is there commission discussion?
I feel uncomfortable supporting that unless there be a decision made. Are these gonna be rental units? Are these gonna be owner-occupied type housing? And I think the neighborhood would deserve to know that. Although I see none of them here tonight, I'm not gonna support that item until we know which way that's going to be.
And I feel with Meredith's question to Shawna, that gave us clarification that they will be have that opportunity to bring it back, and we'll see the plans, whether it's fourplex or what type of units will be adjacent to that single family.
Other discussion?
Well, I can agree with Teresa on that, however, I'm -- like Ken, I'm struggling that in this early stage of the land transition, that it's -- could be, possibly be eightplexes, and how if we approve this, are we then not somewhat giving a green light for that type of development? And I understand there's different processes to go through, but this is an early opportunity to maybe provide that land use and the transition into something that's compatible with the neighborhood. So I'm not gonna -- I can't support that. I can't support this based on that.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, again, I can sympathize with the thinking, but I think we're asking the applicant to invest a considerable amount of time and effort when the only object of the agenda item tonight is to modify the city's land use plan. And if the applicant comes back as part of the rezone, and the neighbors aren't comfortable with it, and the commission's not comfortable with it, then that's our opportunity to say no, that zoning's not appropriate either because of the types of units, the densities, the objections from the community. I'm not sure that we should be asking applicants for that kind of detail when the action is really just trying to provide some clarity to the land use plan that at this point in time does not have any clarity.
Any other discussion?
Meredith, I wonder if we start the slow. Bob, we're asking to change the land use, I believe, to multi-family. If we vote yes to that tonight, are you saying that when we come to zoning time, we can still say no?
Yes. Yeah, that's my understanding, that this doesn't guarantee that the applicant has -- can put eightplexes on that piece of property. There's still two steps left before that's even a potential.
Shawna, would you be good enough to confirm that for us?
Sure. The future land use amendment here is making it clear that in the future, rather than single-family homes, and in our planning world, twin homes are single-family, would be something different than single-family homes will be here. A higher-density residential development will be here. The multi-family residential is a higher density. We don't -- in the land use, we don't -- and zoning, we don't speak to ownership in land use. It's how many dwelling units per acre, how many-- It's how many dwelling units per acre, how many units, how many square feet of land are dedicated to the dwelling unit. And so this, what they're asking for is sometime in the future, and they'll probably come back next month with a rezoning request, as a matter of fact, I know they will because they filed for one, to rezone this to a multifamily-type residential district. Now, you're certainly more than welcome as a planning commission to say, you know what, we're not comfortable with conventional zoning. We want to see a planned development district here so we can have higher standards and more public review with a final development plan, and make that recommendation to the city council with the rezoning. But what they're asking for here is that they want to accommodate a higher-density residential development, higher density than single-family, similar to what's already approved across the street south of Sixth Street.
This particular piece of ground is not in a PD?
It's not zoned agricultural.
Zoned agricultural.
Right.
So Shawna, next month, when they come back for that rezone, they will bring something that is a bit more specific?
Yes, they'll have a specific request to what zoning district they want to apply for. And if you want to send a strong message to the applicant, PD versus conventional zoning, you can certainly that, include that in your discussion here tonight to give them direction. I believe the request right now would be for the RA1 residential district, which would allow for apartments. But again, we don't speak to ownership, whether it's apartments or condominiums, it has to do with density and how many dwelling units per acre, or how many square feet of land is used per dwelling unit.
In the city of Sioux Falls, multifamily is the designation for either condominiums, townhouses, or apartments. They're all treated the same, with the same type of zoning.
For the building code, they are, yes. For the building code, they are. And in zoning, it's multifamily if you have more than, three or more units, it's considered multifamily, even if they're condos. The condo thing is, it speaks to ownership.
And if we requested this to be put into a PD, I think all the PD would allow us to do is would be a little more vigilant on the type of building, size of the building. It wouldn't necessarily address rental or owner-occupied.
No, there is nowhere in the zoning code or any of the city codes that speaks to ownership.
If they were to have come here tonight and requested a multifamily zoning for owner-occupied, could they have been down the road, changed their mind, and turned these into rentals?
There is no place in the city code that speaks to ownership, owner-occupied or rental. It's simply the number of dwelling units per acre of land. So we don't address ownership at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Any more discussion from the commission on this item?
I think if I knew these were being built as owner-occupied, to be sold, I could support it. I'm just not in a position, I think, or feel comfortable supporting the type of units for rental units at this point in time.
All right, we're going to ask for the vote on item 25. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose and sign?
Aye.
Item 25, I believe, three to two, so item 25 is recommended for approval. Item 26 has been deferred for 30 days, and that's a resolution amending the future land use map as part of the Sioux Falls 2015 growth management plan petition number 2007-08-16, Northwest Benson Road and Marion Road, from single-family to multifamily, future land uses to an allocation of commercial, office, institutional, multifamily future land use. That one has been deferred until next month's meeting. So we'll move on to item 27, is a conditional use permit in the C2 general commercial district to allow motor vehicle display and sales at 301 South Lake Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you. The current land uses on the subject property include a motor vehicle display and sales, and also a single-family residence. The conditional use permit plan depicts the removal of existing structures and new site improvements. The display area for the vehicles will remain adjacent to 12th Street and Lake. The new parking areas will be provided for employees along the alley with screen fencing. Mature trees on the site will be retained where possible. The conditional use plan does provide sufficient clarity to indicate the nature, location, and extent of the work proposed. The applicant has provided some supplemental information, including elevations of the new structure. The building materials are not indicated, but appear to be brick and exterior finish insulation system, or EFIS. The building is located adjacent to residential, and building materials are an important consideration. Staff recommends a condition of approval for exterior building materials. There is a six-foot cedar fence shown on the north property boundary. New sidewalks are indicated, as well as new trees along Lake Avenue. Because the application does provide clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work, and the proposal requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with one condition, and that is that building materials are represented on the conditional use plan and approved by the planning commission are the same as when a building permit is issued. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
Mr. Chair, I've got a question regarding zoning. Is the subject property that's being considered here tonight, is that already zoned, C2?
The planning commission, or excuse me, the city council approved a rezoning request at last night's meeting. That rezoning will not become effective until the end of the month. There is a 20-day after publication.
Does that zoning then reach all the way to 11th Street?
Yes. It's just that parcel right there that Steve indicated.
So it'd be C2 south of 11th Street?
Yeah, everything between 11th and 12th will be zoned, C2.
And then single-family to the north?
In the multifamily zoning district, yes. There's a single-family home across the street.
A single-family home in a multi-housing district?
Correct.
Explain that.
The zoning, especially in older parts of town, don't always reflect what the existing land use is. Back when, in the 70s, when they did the overhaul of the comprehensive plan, they rezoned a lot of property to encourage redevelopment, but redevelopment didn't happen. The single-family homes are still there.
Okay. Thank you, Shawna.
Shawna, the single-family homes are where Steve just had the red checks, is that correct?
Red check it again, will you, Steve? I wasn't...
It just disappeared.
Yeah, right there, yes.
Okay.
That's correct. But I'm told they're not owner-occupied.
They're rental?
That's what I'm told.
Other questions, Shawna? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Kevin Hustler with BHI Construction, Harrisburg. I see, I got some questions to answer. First of all, there, that was not correct, the ones you checked. The one is a six-plex on the very far right. Yep, that's a six-plex. The next one over is a single-family rental. Next one to the left is owner-occupied. And then the next one over is a garage. And the next one over is a rental.
Where's the garage again?
The little one right there in between, no, no, that is actually the house. The one you circled is a garage. That particular house has two garages, and it's owner-occupied. And I have talked to the man, his name is Berwin, and we've had quite a bit of concern, conversation. His major concern was what was going to happen with the lighting, and I believe we addressed all the issues with the lighting. I, you know, I told him that the city requires that we have less than three kilowatts that fall onto his property, and once he realized that, he was no longer concerned. The house that's currently there that will be torn down is barely visible, and what will go into its place is a nice new office of masonry, construction of some sort, either EFIS, split-faced block, or a combination of both. And that's what I've actually shown here, is split-faced block and EFIS. The owner's intention is to have this look very nice, to have it look almost bank-like, but still fit into a residential area. I have, I have walked the area and talked extensively with all of the people that are living there, not just the owners. The owners have all been invited to three meetings, neighborhood meetings. Only two people showed up, and they did not come tonight, and they did not come to the final meeting last night, because I believe that we basically satisfied their conditions of use and what we were planning to do with the properties. And each one of the people that I talked to that live in the residence, all are in agreement that what we're going to do here is a viable project, and it won't impact them substantially, and probably not at all. Also, what I've gotten for feedback from the owners of the property, many of them not being from the Sioux Falls area, some of them being from Minneapolis, some of them from being down in Arizona, that the feedback that I've gotten from them was positive. And now, this is towards the rezoning, and I haven't had any feedback other than that was they wanted to see that rezoning go through, they wanted to see that block, that front area next to 11th Street, become commercial. So I think what we've got is a very viable project. We do not want to cause impact to the neighborhood, and we're, I mean, we're trying to retain as much, the one tree there has to be probably close to 50 years old, and we're trying to keep it there. So there's two little evergreens that I guess were volunteers at one time. I shouldn't say little, they're probably 20 feet tall, but, but, excuse me, we plan to retain them, too. Other than that, we would plant some type of matching. And also, we do want to ask for a vacate on the Lake Drive, but that is only in discussion merit, I mean, that's just a discussion. And if that was the case, we would just simply have a driveway coming in and slide the building over slightly, which would even lessen the impact. The person that is on the lot next to us, to the very right there, yep, he is very much in favor of the vacate, and it's only been in conversation, but that would actually give him, he doesn't have off-street parking right now that's adequate, and that would actually give him a spot for some off-street parking. Now, it's going to require a substantial retaining wall in that area, but he liked the idea. He thought that would be quite nice to have that retaining wall in there. So what I'm getting for feedback is positive.
All right, questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Okay, I don't see any. Is there commission action?
A motion for approval on item number 27 with the one conditional.
Stipulation, okay.
A second?
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right, on item 27, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 27 with one stipulation has been approved. Item 28 is a conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to expand the existing group home, Glory House Campus, at 4,000 Southwest Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening, my name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this item and others this evening. You'll recognize the subject property as something that you had acted on last month as a rezoning of abandoned railroad right-of-way, and the purpose of the rezoning was to take it to the Institutional District to allow expansion of the Glory House, a group home on the property adjacent. It's a 1.3-acre site, and the applicant is proposing to expand the existing Glory House group home facilities from the adjacent property. They provided plans on how they intend to do that. The applicant is proposing to construct a building with 2,736 square feet on two levels. Offices and meeting rooms are located on the upper floors, six bedrooms with shared bath, kitchen lounge, and dining areas are located on the lower level. So the entire building is a split-use, offices and residential, according to their program. I've indicated in your report the conditional use standards that have to be met, commenting as to the type of supervision the home will have, if any, neighborhood, information, meetings, and so on. The applicant should be able to respond to any questions you have on those items. Staff's recommending approval of the conditional use permit as presented, and that concludes staff report. We've had no calls on this project.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, I would just like to make a comment. I've noticed here on all of the things that you've asked them to provide, everything has been provided?
The applicant said they would address that with you this evening.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Bob Lutz of 615 South Grange, and I come before you tonight because I'm on the Board of Directors and trying to move this project forward. I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Bob, when this goes to council, are you going to be able to vote on?
No, I won't. I had to remove myself from the zoning approval last night.
Questions for Bob? Okay, question on me, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If there is any, so is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the conditional use permit.
A second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? On item 28, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 28 is approved. Item 29 is a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow on-sale alcohol establishment at 136 South Phillips Avenue. Staff report.
The applicant is placing one of the recently issued on-sale licenses within an existing building on the corner of 10th and Phillips Avenue. There's three land use criteria for non-sale alcohol establishment. The first is that it will not create an undue concentration of similar uses. The 2015 downtown plan does include seven goals to guide land uses in the city center. Goal number five includes designating downtown as the arts, cultural, and entertainment district. There are several establishments that provide entertainment venues on Phillips Avenue, including restaurants with on-sale accessory alcohol. Staff's review does not include this as being a concentration of similar uses and does not reveal one of undue concentration. The second criteria is that it's not an area where children would be expected to frequent, patronize, or recreate. This new on-sale establishment should not be an attraction to children, excuse me, although the applicant should work with the crime prevention officer to establish a security management plan, and that is a condition of approval. Third, that it's compatible with characteristics of surrounding uses and is not injurious to surrounding properties. The applicant should be willing to discuss impacts to surrounding neighborhoods and properties in the downtown business district. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, it requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use with four conditions. One, that a security management plan is approved by the crime prevention officer. Two, that a floor plan drawn to scale is provided to building services with the change in use request. Three, that it's provided for this applicant only. And four, the planning commission review of the conditional use permit is required in six months and one year from the start of business. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna? Thank you. Applicant here, please?
Evening, my name's Tim Cant. I'm the owner of the building at 136 South Phillips. With the new way that the city council is doing the liquor licenses, the main reason why it's going to this address is... why it's going to this address is because you have to have it placed somewhere within 45 days. So, with me owning this building and owning East Old Smoke Shop, and I have a quick pick and a lunch counter in this same building, we're going to put the liquor license, that East Old Smoke Shop, at the time being, which is addressed at 136 South Phillips. We'll probably only be selling beer and wine for the time being. Not to say the liquor license won't be moved somewhere in the future, but for right now, it has to be placed somewhere, so that's why it's going at this address.
Questions for Tim?
Tim, when you say it's going to be placed there, you're going to have an operation, though. You're going to sell liquor there, you're going to...
Right now, we have an off-sale license. Right now, we're just anticipating, probably putting in a small cooler in East Old Smoke Shop, and just selling beer, some wine.
So, you see this approved as a temporary?
Very temporary. I can't tell you what's going to happen in the future, but... And the only other thing I need for the stipulation on this too, and I know they did that at the Stogies application when I came here too, is that to change the, for this applicant only, to include my sons, my three sons that are owners also, and I know they were able to do that the last time.
Questions for Tim? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I would move for approval on item number 29 with the four stipulations.
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there commission discussion?
We want to amend that one stipulation, though, that third one. So, it's approved for this applicant only and his children, or his sons, or do we not do that?
It would depend upon how the applicant has written whether it has...
Shawna?
If you want to make a motion to amend that particular condition, however, the applicant did indicate that it would be temporary here, so...
Does the application that he made include his children, or...
No, it doesn't. I can't remem- was it just you?
Yeah, I'm sure that, the last time we get it, you changed it.
When he opened Stogies, he was concerned that if something happened to him, that his boys were going to be in business with him. And so, that he just wanted to make sure that it would transfer to his boys, that we wouldn't have a problem. This particular one, though, seems kind of temporary, so...
So, what the next?
Shawna, the application lists SKK LLC, and maybe we should ask Tim if that LLC includes his sons.
I'll let the applicant answer that question for you.
No, it doesn't. You know, like I said, it is a very temporary thing. It'll probably be replaced sometime in the next three to six months, so that, we can leave it the way it is for now. I hope I live.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's fine, because I don't want to have to change all that stuff.
Next time, add him on the application.
Well, like I said, but with it being the LLC and stuff, I would probably run into some, because they're not on that at all, so... But I know they changed it at this level the last time. It's just mainly a deal of, the way those liquor licenses are, all of a sudden, something happens to me, and they take it away, and we've invested $150,000, and it can't go to the family. You know, that's my main concern.
But if something would happen in the next three months?
Well, exactly. So, you, I mean, that's, whatever you guys can do, I mean, I appreciate if we could include, you know, family, if it's at all possible.
Do we need to do that here, Shawna, or can you guys just do that internally?
If you tie it to this applicant only, it means that another tenant can't go in there. We don't end up with two bars. That if another bar wants to go in there, and the Cant's, plural, go away, then you get another chance to review the conditional use permit.
Yeah, but what we're saying is, we understand that part, but what we're saying is, do we need to add the son's name here, or can you guys just do that internally?
Right. I think Tim's saying he's fine with it the way it is here tonight with just this applicant only.
Thank you.
I guess I would ask how you could, how can you do that if his sons are not part of the LLC? I don't think it's, how can we add that?
It's not our...
All right.
They'd have to work it out these days.
Any other discussion?
So, does the, does the motion and the second stand?
Motion, there's a motion and a second, and the four stipulations are as in here.
Right.
All right, on item 29, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 29 is approved. Item 30 is a conditional use permit in S Institutional District to allow a telecommunications tower, 5,500 West 26th Street. Staff report.
The applicants are represented by Peter Campbell, Verizon Wireless, Ford Buell Consulting, and the owner of the property is Resurrection Lutheran Church. This is a property that you had considered the rezoning on last month to S Institutional for the purpose of church campus development, and to apply for a conditional use to put in a telecommunications tower. The rezoning was approved last night by the city council. You have the conditional use for a tower in front of you today, tonight. The applicant is proposing to construct an 87 and 1/2 unipole cylinder-type tower similar to a flagpole, and attach one cross on the top of the pole as decoration for the Resurrection Lutheran Church. Verizon Wireless will then utilize the cross pole as an antenna support structure by hiding the antennas inside the unipole, therefore meeting the requirements of stealth design. Such unipole would have an accessory structure as well to house the radios that would power the antennas in the pole, and the connection between the pole and the accessory structure would be made underground, again, to address the issues of stealth design. The neighborhood meeting was held on September 24th, and the applicant can report to you the results of that meeting. Staff has had no calls from people who live in the neighborhood or who expressed concern. The city council did ask the question about how close could that structure be to adjacent residential uses. According to the standards that are listed in your staff report, indicates that you can't be any closer to that, it shouldn't be any closer than 300 feet or the fall-down distance, and you're addressing that with the conditional use. The applicant has provided dimensions from the pole to the closest residential uses. Those are also included in your report, and they far and away exceed the requirements, the minimum requirements for separation. Otherwise, what you would be looking at tonight is the issue of stealth design and possibly illumination. The applicant indicated that the cross would be lighted. As long as the cross is lighted and not the telecommunications equipment, then we're also meeting the requirements of the conditional use for telecommunications. We are setback from the right-of-way, public right-of-way, 241 feet, pole's only 102 feet, so that requirement is met. Staff believes that the proposed 15-foot cross visually is probably disproportionate a little bit. The applicant should address that, or any questions from you this evening. However, staff understands that the 15-foot cross is what was shown to the neighborhood during their presentations, and unless there's someone from the neighborhood here this evening to address that, we'll leave it up to you and the applicant to address. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with one stipulation, that natural screen fencing materials adjacent to the residentially-used or zoned property shall be used, and that's a condition for approval. We've had no calls, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, my name's Peter Campbell. I represent Verizon Wireless. I live at 4622 18th Avenue South in Minneapolis, Minnesota. As Steve had mentioned, we did have several meetings. The first step took place over 12 months ago when I first went to the congregation where we talked about the potential for a telecommunications facility on their property. At that time, I presented them with three different stealth-type options for them to look at. They had selected the proposal that's before you now under the CUP application for the cross. Obviously, you've seen these similar-type structures with flags on them. We did photo simulations and presented them to the congregation. The congregation decided at that point, the board rather, to decide to move forward with this type of design. On the July 24th neighborhood meeting where we contacted, I believe it was 200-plus residences surrounding this property, and it was my understanding it was approximately 10 or 11 people, or 10 or 11 residents attended that meeting. None were in opposition to the design, and actually, at that point, I showed them the photo simulations of all the options that the congregation had to choose from, and at that time, they were all in agreement that this was appropriate for the area, or at least at that time, no opposition was mentioned. In regards to lighting, there was also no issue brought up at any time regarding lighting. The largest, I guess, outcome from the neighborhood meeting was that the neighborhood was happy to see that the church was going to be rezoning the lot to Institutional to limit the possible development of residential structures in that open space. And that was really the largest concern that came out of the neighborhood meeting and not the telecommunications facility at all. I believe at one time, the church had evaluated the possibility of developing that open space, and it's my understanding that a lot of that, the neighbors north of the church obviously enjoy that large, open field. So, by the rezoning that was approved in city council, that would preclude anyone from going in now without having to go back and rezonate as an RA1 or residentially-zoned district, and that was really the only outcome of the neighborhood meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Peter?
Mr. Chair, Peter, I would echo the comments that Steve made about proportion and scale. That 15-foot-high cross is going to be hard to, you know, it's not going to be very visible that far up in the air. But, and I think, too, you're going to have to be real cautious about the light fixtures that you pick to avoid lighting that pole. They're going to have to be able to throw a small beam of light vertically quite a ways. And I guess we're fortunate in South Dakota, we don't have black sky ordinances, or you wouldn't be able to even do that. So, obviously, it's something that the church can decide to do, but as a planning commission, we're going to be very conscious of the light fixtures and how they actually light that cross.
Now, just to clarify, may I ask, when you say it's disproportionate, you think that the cross is too small, the way it is now, or that you, okay? Because one of the issues we brought up, or when we were working with the architects to design this particular pole, was to make the cross look as though it was a cross from the ground up, or to simply put a cross, an ornamental cross, on the top of the tower. And the church at that point, that question was posed to the board, and they had opted for the ornamental cross on the top opposed to, you know, a monstrous cross.
Understand.
So, and the lighting, by the way, that will be utilized here will be very similar to the lighting that was, is being used at Nyberg's Ace Hardware just down the road, where this commission had approved the conditional use permit for that flagpole tower, where we light that. So, similar lighting elements will be used here as well.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval with the one stipulation.
A second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 30, item 30 is approved. Item 31 is a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow on-sale alcohol establishment, beer and wine bistro at 420 East 8th Street. Staff report.
The applicant is Craftsman Creek Studio and Gallery. The owner of the building is Larry Howe, Howe Investment Company. It's currently, again, rezoned at the last planning commission meeting. I went to the council last night, it was approved, to change to the C3 Central Business District zoning. Existing land use and art gallery, studio, and office tenants, and studio tenants, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing gallery space into a wine and beer bistro in the historic Howe Building as part of a developing East Bank District. An existing furniture design business will remain, and the bistro is proposed to showcase furniture items as well as display and sales of artworks by local artists. Food items will be served while the applicant searches for a restaurant tenant. Hours of business are indicated as being open six days a week, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Monday through Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., 2:00 a.m., excuse me, Friday, and 12:00 noon to 2:00 a.m., Saturday. Up to 30 parking spaces are available on-site. Again, those are, these are leased spaces from the Howe's. In the future, the applicant anticipates making use of the outdoor areas. East of the building is arena for summer music and dance events, fundraisers, and arts festivals. However, that's not included in your application this evening. We would have required a lot more information on those particular features. For supplemental information, we'd like to address the three issues that are concerned about locating on-sale alcohol establishments. We feel that, staff feels that there's not an undue concentration of similar uses. The only one close that you've dealt with in recent past was up on Weber Avenue. But that business has not opened. There are two on-sale accessory uses, a Falls Landing Restaurant to the west and a Sina's Restaurant to the south. We don't feel it's in a, excuse me, an area that children would be expected to frequent or recreate unsupervised. A city bicycle path runs in East 8th Street in front of the proposed establishment, but children aren't expected to create this as a destination for their bicycle travels. It is compatible with the characteristics of surrounding uses, in particular, the redeveloping area of the east side market area. Proposed establishment is characteristically Central Business District and Railroad Center planned development districts are compatible. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with three conditions. One, approved for this applicant only. Two, a security management plan approved by the police department. Three, the planning commission review of the conditional use permit is required six months and one year from the start of business. We've had no calls from neighbors or anyone else about this application, and that concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, my name's Jerry Howe. I'm the applicant. I leased this property from Larry Howe. I've been merchant there for the past four years. Any questions for me?
Questions for Jerry?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 31?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the conditional use with the three conditions.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there commission discussion? All right, on item 31, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 31 is approved. Item 32 is a minor amendment to subareas A and B, Heather Ridge to PD Planned Development District to reduce required side yard setbacks from 10 feet to 7 feet for twin home construction at West 85th Street and South Western Avenue. Staff report.
The applicants are represented by Morgan Kohlberg, MJK Incorporated, and the owners by Mike Van Busker, Myron Van Busker Properties. The parcel is six acres, it's currently vacant. And on the north side of the property, there's a drainage way in the agricultural district. To the south, it's vacant in the C4 Planned Commercial and RD Residential Districts within the PD. To the east, it's a drainage way in the agricultural district. And to the west, there are offices, and the Boulder Ridge Estates PD Planned Development District. Shawna, if we could go to the subarea boundaries, maybe that would help to explain some of what's going on. If you recall, the subarea boundaries indicated by the heavy line to the north and to the east of a higher-density residential district calls for twin home development. That's the separation in the subareas. The current applicant purchased some of the higher-density development ground in the other subarea, so now has a project that is included in two subareas, one high-density, one low-density, or medium-density. The medium-density portion of that project allows for twin homes, and they have shown that in their project, and meet the twin home... that in their project, and meet the twin home setback requirements in the side yard of five feet. In the higher-density portion of his project now, that's created by having land in the, in the subarea that allows higher density, the underlying zoning district requirements say that you have to have a ten-foot side back, although he's not going to provide a higher density. His density is going to stay the same on both sides of this public street. Therefore, he is asking for a reduction in the side yard setback requirements from the higher-density ten feet to the lower-density five feet. That's the sum and substance of the request. It is a public street, and staff is recommending approval of the minor amendment. In another situation where they would be conventional zoning, the applicant would be in front of you asking for a rezoning in order to get the reduced setback requirement. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, I maybe got just a little confused there. Block two and block three is higher-density?
Can you circle lot two and block three?
Block two and block three. The block lots one through ten, why those dashes are what the request is to go from ten to five?
That's correct.
Across the street is also a zone, twin home?
That's correct.
That is also being requested from ten to five?
Doesn't have to. He can put in his twin homes at five foot setbacks.
Pardon?
He doesn't have to, because he can put in his twin homes at five-foot setbacks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Applicant, please.
Hi, Morgan Kohlberg, 1119 South Honeysuckle Trail. I guess the only thing I have to say or add to the whole thing is I do have the contract on that whole portion that showed there, so, and, yeah, it's just the twin homes we wanna, and lots one through ten in block two that we wanna get down to five-foot side yards like the ones across the street.
Questions for Morgan? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item thirty-two?
Mr. Chair, for the sake of discussion, I would make the motion to approve this minor amendment. For the sake of discussion, I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess we continually see these requests for the change in the setbacks, and sometimes it's probably warranted, but I, I think that these sorts of requests should be accompanied by at least a drawing or site plan that better indicates what the twin homes will look like, and how much landscaping there will be, and a few of these other things that I think weigh in on our decision to allow these decreases typically. We haven't had many people come and ask for increasing separation, but that, that's my feeling. I, I guess that this would certainly match up what's coming across the street, but I, I think it would really be beneficial if we saw more detail and knew more about landscaping and things like that. Maybe the applicant can help us with some of that.
Any other discussion?
Evidently, at, at one point in time, these setbacks were established for a reason. I can understand that there are other circumstances that might warrant changing that or giving someone the permission to do that, to reduce those setbacks. But I think that if that is the case, there should be shown a hardship or a reason because they know when they purchase the property, what it's zoned, and what the setbacks are, what setbacks are required in that zoning district. And, and I just think that we just need to be really careful that we're not setting a precedent. We're, it seems like we're getting more and more of these every month.
Other discussion? Okay, we'll do a show of hands on this one, on item thirty-two. So, all those in favor, raise your hand, please. Got one? All those not in favor? So, there's four votes against, one vote for, so item thirty-two, the minor amendment, is denied. Item thirty-three is a minor amendment in Subarea D, Shadow Creek Plan Development District to allow waiver in hard surfacing, delay tree planting, and delay site lighting installation at 6201 South Charger Circle. Staff report.
Applicants and owners are represented by Miller Sellers, Heroe Architects, and William Sanchez Jr., University of Sioux Falls. It's a twenty-five-point-three-acre site under construction and occupied. The applicant is requesting an extended period of time to allow them to complete the required improvements as, as called for in the building permit to meet code requirements and also to meet the conditions of the final development plan that you approved. Final development plan application was approved in May of 2007 for the construction of an athletic field grandstand with accessory parking lots as part of a phased development of Subarea D in the PD, and it's currently under construction, as I mentioned. The applicant is proposing to occupy the facility before construction is completed for required landscaping, parking lot surfacing, and parking lot lighting. We requested the applicant to provide us with a schedule of completion for these items, and we're recommending approval of the minor amendment with the following stipulations addressing completion. Number one, the east parking lot is to be completed with required hard surfacing, lighting, and landscaping within twelve months. Item two, the west parking lot is to be completed with required hard surfacing, lighting, and landscaping within twenty-four months. Item three, the approved plan, there is an approved plan of hard surfacing for emergency vehicle access, and item four, there is an approved plan for temporary security lighting. We've had no calls on this from adjacent property owners or otherwise, and I believe the applicant's here to respond to any questions that you might have. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? Thank you. Do you have a question? Applicant, please.
Good evening. My name is Rod Voller. I'm representing University of Sioux Falls at 1101 West 22nd Street. I'm the director of Buildings and Grounds. I believe we, the discussion that Steve had fairly represents the letter that I sent to Steve, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, Rod, I was pleased to see that this new facility turned the whole program around last year. Enabled USF to eke out a win. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I live in the neighborhood. I watched it all month. I know you guys were, were opening the first of September. We had a lot of rain this last thirty days, but, any problems with these time guidelines?
No, no. It should be fine.
Any other questions, Rob? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item thirty-three?
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
I move to approve the minor amendment with the four stipulations.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item thirty-three, the minor amendment, is approved. Item thirty-four is a minor amendment to Subarea C, Westwood Valley, PD Plan Development District to reduce rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to twenty-three feet at 8809 West 32nd Street. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to allow a deck to encroach in the required year, rear yard for zoning purpose and history. I just want to call to the attention that the planning commission did approve a final development plan in September of 2006 for this structure. Staff noted that the decks encroached into the rear yard and indicated a minor amendment would not be supported because there was no hardship. Applicable regulations include projections from buildings that every part of any required yard shall be open to the sky and unobstructed except for eaves, ornamental, features, and air conditioners, and solar collectors. Also, patios and terraces are allowed at grade on the first floor, but must be two feet away from a property line. So, a deck is, is not allowed to encroach into that twenty-five-foot rear yard. The site plan provided with the building permit did not reflect the encroachment of the deck. Upon final development approval, the applicant was notified that staff would not support the minor amendment, and we would not waive the yard requirements. Because the applicant, application does not meet the criteria of the zoning code, and the plan submitted with the building permit did not reflect the encroachment, staff recommends denial of the minor amendment. And that concludes staff report.
Any question for Shawna? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
My name is John Bruch with Equity Homes in Sioux Falls. The plans that we submitted with the building permit were the same plans. They've always showed the same locations, same deck. If you look at the plan, it says eight-by-twelve decks. We never hide anything. We follow the rules. That's why we're here. We came in with a, with a plan. We pulled the building permit. The hardship on this site is, well, there's, you know, there really isn't a hardship. The deal is, is when we laid this out, the city took, or we gave to the city, all the land that's behind us. It's a detention pond that's serving, that's draining over five hundred acres. So, the land that you see that's in the back of this is a lake that we had to create at the cost of over a million dollars, our cost, that we had to hold, even though the city is, is required to pay us back because it is a detention pond, we carried a million dollars in cost on this pond for over eighteen months. So, we can all take a look at what the interest is on that. So, and when we laid this out, we had a plan. The plan is the, the item, the plan that we have, the, the building that we have is, is the plan that we started with. We have several of the units pre-sold. Every single one of them shows an eight-by-twelve deck, as everybody would expect. You have to have at least an eight-foot deck. Planning staff did tell me that we'd need to get a variance. Nobody said, "You're not gonna get a variance." I mean, variances, you guys, you guys turned one down tonight. That's very, very rare. I've been watching these things, it's like everybody else has. Very rare to see one turned down. And usually, you turn it down if there's a neighbor that's affected. Take a look at this. Here's what you have. You have the YMCA that we donated the land for, for the YMCA below this pond. We donated the land for the YMCA. Sioux Valley Hospitals bought some of the land. We have a twelve-acre site that we had to give back to take care of five hundred acres of drainage. So, my, my asking for a two-foot reduction in the rear yard for a deck, when a residential locked deck can go all the way to five feet from the actual property line, we're twenty-three feet from the actual property line. Now, what's behind the property line? Thirty to forty feet, and then a slough and ponds. The only people we're affecting is a couple bluegill. We're selling these up to this pond to get, to recoup some of the money we lost when we had to give up the land for drainage as lake, you know, their, their lake condos. So, we need to have a deck. People are gonna sit out on their deck. They wanna have a deck that they can at least have a table on. So, you know, staff does not show the entire story. The whole story is, this is land we donated. This is a pond that we had to give back to the city at a considerable cost to us. We did get recouped. The city did pay back. Their cost recovery is on the detention pond eighteen months after we requested it. So, you know, I'm not asking for much. I'm asking for two feet on a rear deck. We're still twenty-five feet, the building you can see is far away from the rear setback requirement, and there's absolutely nobody affected. So, I hope everybody takes all the consideration in, and, you know, this should be a slam dunk for us.
Any questions for John?
Mr. Chair, John, I hope that the planning commission's not getting a reputation for not thinking through some of these things. That would be the furthest from the truth. Typically, we do not get involved in engineering issues, and, and being in development business, I think you know that.
Mm-hmm.
That this body deals with land use issues.
Correct.
Your dealings regarding retention, the YMCA and so forth, while wonderful.
Yeah.
Are not directly tied to zoning issues. Now, I assume that because this is a planned development, that you showed us in the form of a final development plan, this.
Building, right there.
Development.
Yes.
And now, you said a few minutes ago that you, when you pulled your permit, these decks were shown.
Exact same plan, right there.
Did we see this plan?
I gave, we, we had a plan check. There's a plan check that we have to go through.
No, 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 no. Did this come through the planning commission, not the, see?
The, the planning commission has looked at what you're looking at right there.
The planning commission did. And so, we approved those decks as a part of a final development plan.
Knowing that, I would, I knew we had to get a variance, and I, and I assumed, when you take the, the big picture and look at this big picture, knowing that there's absolutely not one neighbor within a thousand feet.
No, 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 no. That's.
Well, yeah, assuming it's always dangerous.
You're confused, you're confused here about the process, because at some point in time, if this was a planned development, you showed us.
Absolutely. That's why we had to go through all the extra jumps for a planned development.
Final development plan.
Right.
And you're, you're suggesting that we knew that night that your decks did not conform? Is that?
I never had a different drawing. This is the same drawing. I, we don't even change it for our benefit.
So, does, does the staff recall what the conditions for that approval were? Maybe Shawna, you could reiterate that?
I don't, I don't have the conditions for that particular final development plan, although when I, when I reviewed the history on this particular parcel, it had indicated in the staff report of the final development plan that the decks encroached into the required rear yard, and that a, a minor amendment or a variance would be required, and staff would not support a minor amendment.
That was a part of the final development plan?
Correct, before it was constructed. So, yes, it's the same plan, but, and, and he didn't ask for the encroachment at that time with the final development plan, so you didn't approve a variance with that one. No.
So.
But it's the same plan, yes.
Is, are these built?
The building is up, and I have half of it sold.
The building's up, and you knew that you needed a final development.
I knew I needed a variance.
A variance, and you just assumed that you would get it.
Well, I, I just, I tend to look at the, the whole picture, not just the microcosm of a deck that on a residential house, you can go all the way to five feet, and you have twenty-three. Also, it's a detention, I know what the simple fix is. The city can give me back some of my detention pond. We replat it, and that goes away. We don't have to worry about a variance. Any other questions for John? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? I don't see any. Is there commission action on item thirty-four?
Mr. Chair, I, I think the planning commission is starting to take a stand on setbacks and how we're going to do these going forward. But for, for the sake of this particular item, I am gonna make a motion to approve this minor amendment. Not that we like doing this, but maybe this is the best remedy for this situation.
All right, there's a motion on the table to approve item thirty-four?
I'll second the motion, and, again, I don't know what to say to John. I, I don't think he makes good arguments relates to this, especially since he knew as part of the final development plan process that you had this ahead of you, and you assumed that it would get approved. And I, I don't know personally if I'd take that risk, but in the future, I would certainly recommend that you get that taken care of as quickly as possible.
Yeah, if I could say one more thing. Hang on, we're closed public comment. Thank you. Any other commission discussion on item 34?
I would just, I mean, I understand why he's before us. I too agree with Meredith, though, that, you know, these things have to be taken care of sooner rather than later. And the fact of the matter is, I personally, unless somebody can show me just a real darn good reason why we need to continue doing this, I personally am going to just kind of draw the line in the sand tonight.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second, for approval of item 34. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So, we have a tie and the chair will vote no. So, item 34 is denied. Item 35 is a minor amendment to Subarea B Interstate Crossing Business Park PD Plan Development District to increase allowed freestanding sign height from six feet to 10 feet at 5,000 South Broadband Lane. Staff report.
This minor amendment has to do with signage. Actually, the next two items on your agenda deal with signage. The purpose here is to make the signage conform to the requirements of the project. The projects in both cases require that tenant signage be addressed in a freestanding sign on the property. And because of the number of tenants in each project, the signage, square footage, and subsequently, the height of the sign do not conform to the requirements. So, the applicant is proposing to construct a freestanding sign 10-foot high and 14-foot nine inches wide with 58 square foot of lighted sign area at the northwest corner of the property of this intersection of West 57th and South Broadband Lane. And the proposed sign has 12 individual business panels and a Brenner Pond logo incorporated into the sign face with a stone base and support structure. According to the ordinance, the signage allowed would be six-foot high and 48 square foot in sign area. Actually, the applicant should address the nature of the request as to what is causing the need for additional square footage and height. Planning staff is currently, as a matter of information, studying proposed changes to the sign ordinance that would allow for an increase of similar type signage in the O Office District. And we provided a chart in your staff report that shows that the allowed signage would conform if approved. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the minor amendment with the following stipulations. One, the sign cannot be located in a sanitary sewer easement. And two, that the maximum sign height is to be 10 feet and the maximum sign area be 58 square feet as requested by the applicant. We did have a call from an adjacent property owner who wanted to know what the nature of the request was and when it was explained to them, they had no objection. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, what's the timetable for adopting the new signage ordinance?
We'd like to defer to the Assistant Planning Director, Jeff Schmidt, on that one.
We're waiting for the meeting.
Hi, Jeff Schmidt, Assistant Planning Director. The committee's been meeting and we're not quite to a conclusion yet. We could propose the ordinance next month if you'd like, but at the same time, the committee has not come to a conclusion. This proposal that you're seeing before you, I mean, this, for clarification, this O Office scenario was sent out in May for a recommendation. And at that point, we have not received any comments back in the negative or the positive. So, I would take that as we could move forward today.
With that, just the O Office section?
Correct. And Dave and Pam both sit on that committee.
Any questions for Jeff? Is the applicant here, please?
I'm Steve Richardson with Ace Neon Signs at 403 North Kewahana. I guess I'm guilty for being on that committee, too. I think in the O Office District, that is probably one of the toughest problems that we have dealing with, you know, in that committee because it is such a restricted-type zone. Even more so in this case because this particular area, our property, is allowed up to 58 square feet on the signage, being that it's got two frontages. We can go for a 20% increase if they only do one sign. So, to design a sign that's got 58 square feet and keeping only six feet overall height, you end up with a pretty elongated sign. We did start out with a proposal to Craig on that and by the time we had the 58 square feet in there and a couple of support pedestals on the end and stuff, that sign ended up being right around the 20-foot long range. One of the problems that also exists at this property, and staff alluded to it a little bit, is that 10-feet sewer setback inside the sidewalk to the driveway or to the parking lot curving at this property. We've only got 20 feet. You take 10 feet away from that for the sewer setback, we'll end up with 10 feet for a sign. And we're not allowed to go up, so we've got to go along and we don't have the room for that either. Also, when we look at designing the sign, we're up to 58 square feet that were allowed only six feet in height, the sign only ends up being about a foot or so off the ground, which really prohibits any kind of nice landscaping or anything that could be done around there either, so.
Any questions for Steve?
I don't know if you know the answer to this. Maybe Craig will have to answer. How big is the building? Well, just how big is the building? I mean, square
Craig, can you just?
Okay.
Craig, would you just name an address for the record, please?
Craig Lloyd, 1005 Tomar Road, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Lloyd Companies. Couple things, too, is, I mean, this sign is based on the same thing we've done at Donegal, all our developments. I mean, they're all the same size. We think we do a good job in our design of our signs. To come up with a 21-foot-long sign, to me, is a hazard as far as views and just look, to me, it's kind of terrible. So, that's one of the reasons we've been waiting and waiting and waiting for this new sign ordinance. And we do have to move forward.
It's coming.
Yeah, I know. But we're here today and I got tenants moving in and they'd like to have some signage. And that's why we're here. We try to do a good job at our signs.
Any questions for Craig or Steve? All right, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right, is there commission action on item 35?
Mr. Chair, since I'm a member of this committee that's slowly lumbering toward a conclusion, I think that I would make a recommendation or make a move to approve this because this has been one of the areas of the office area that I think that we have some consensus on needing an addition, need additional square footage in that. And it would probably be based on the assumption that the original, the eventual ordinance will reflect this. So, I will make a motion to approve this with the two stipulations.
I second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Item 35 with two stipulations is approved. Item 36 is a minor amendment to Subarea B, West 57th Street, Number 2 PD Plan Development District to allow an increase in freestanding sign height from six feet to 10 feet at 4301 West 57th Street. Staff report.
We have exactly the same situation with this application and, in fact, the same applicants and owner representatives. It's a slightly bigger site and there are some residential uses close by. The applicant is proposing the same sign design, 14-foot nine inches wide, 58 square foot of signage. We're located now at the northeast corner of the property at the intersection of West 57th Street and South Roland Green Avenue and thus the relationship to residential. Donegal Center logo incorporated into the sign face with a stone base and support structure. Again, it's a sign allowed at six-foot high and 48 square foot in area. The applicant has indicated to you previously the intent of their desire to meet design standards that seem to be working well for these types of projects. Same rationale for study group recommendation for approval of the minor amendment with two stipulations. Again, the sign cannot be located in a sanitary sewer easement and the maximum height 10 feet and maximum sign area to 58 square feet. We did have a caller on this one as well and when it was described to them, they had no concern. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Applicant, please.
Steve Richardson, Ace Neon Signs, again, 403 North Kewahana. Again, pretty much the same situation as just down the street. I think there is a little bit more room for the sign, I think 25 square, or 25 feet instead of the 20. But, again, you end up filling up the area when you go with a 20-foot-long sign pretty quick, so. This particular property is set up the same as Craig's other properties down there at 2220 West 57th with commercial properties and apartments up above, but it's the same type of sign as he's got down there.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I move to approve the minor amendment with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 36 is approved. Item 37 is a minor amendment to Subarea A, 69th Street, North Central Heart Institute PD Plan Development District to not require trash enclosures at 4,400 West 69th Street. Staff report.
The applicant in this case is Blaine Jones, who is a staff member at the Avera Healthcare System. The applicant is proposing not to scream the dumpsters as required. The site plan was provided in your addendum packet and shows the current locations of the dumpsters. The applicant has not provided sufficient information to understand the hardship. Therefore, staff is recommending denial as this application is merely a convenience mechanism to, and does not demonstrate hardship. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna?
I do not believe that the applicant is here this evening, so.
So, is our choice?
To just go ahead and deny.
We can, if the applicant doesn't show, we can go ahead and deny. All right, I'll call for the applicant, but I don't see anyone here. Is there anyone from the audience who would care to speak on item 37? Okay. Is there commission action on item 37?
Mr. Chair, I will move for denial on this item, 37.
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to deny. Is there any commission discussion? Okay, on item 37, we're voting to, the motion and second are for denial. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 37 is denied. Item 38 is a minor amendment to Subarea A, 41st Street, Tan PD Plan Development District to reduce the required front yard setback on a private road from 25 feet to zero feet for parking garages and from 25 feet to eight feet for buildings number eight and nine and from 25 feet to 12 feet for all other apartment buildings for twin home construction at West 41st Street and South Gurnell Avenue. Staff report.
This is a planned development district that has allowed higher-density residential development or office development for some time now. The project that's coming forward to you is a multifamily residential development proposing to allow apartment buildings, garages and parking. And in the process of putting the plan together, the applicant has tried to address addressing requirements by the city and in so doing, has imposed a condition which requires a variance from setback requirements. You, as a planning commission, have the power to review that and approve if you feel so inclined. It's an eight-acre site, represented the, the applicant is David Erickson of Vandywall Associates. Here tonight are the representatives of the owner, Michael Bender, Boulder Creek Town Homes, and Mike Crane is here this evening, as well as Kerry Shaw, the builder. You did approve a final development, or you are looking at a final development plan for a project that you approved the land use for, so we're in a position of trying to determine the requirements of the project now for an allowed use. The density area, yard and height regulations are dictated by the RA1 Residential Zoning District and the other regulations for Subarea A require that the subarea incorporate designated pedestrian walkways to connect public sidewalks to the proposed buildings and recreation areas and that for residential uses, outdoor recreation areas be indicated on the final development plan. The plan has addressed both of those conditions for the subarea. What is being requested now is a variance in setback requirements from a private road. The private road is necessary to meet the addressing requirements by the city. The setback reductions are required because of the nature of the design. This is not going to be subdivided in the future, however, it is proposed to be developed in phases. Phase one of the final development plan is indicated on the plan in front of you. Setbacks in required yards are indicated as meeting the RA1 density requirements or subarea zoning requirements, except where the front yard comes up against the private road. There, a 25-foot front yard setback is required. However, the applicant is proposing, because of the design layout, to reduce the setback to zero for parking and enclosed garages, similar to that for a driveway and a parking lot. And the applicant is proposing to reduce the setback to eight feet for buildings number eight and nine and to reduce the setback to 12 feet for all other buildings. In reviewing the plan, staff can support a setback reduction to 10 feet for buildings eight and nine, however, no less. The plan should be revised also to provide minimum 30-foot separation between two-story buildings and adjacent structures as required by the zoning ordinance. Other conditions that come into play here, there will be a final plan check by the fire department, engineering, zoning and building services as required for building permit. And staff is not aware that any other conditions cannot be met. Planning commission is not approving anything else on the plan that's in violation of the city ordinance by approving this amendment. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the minor amendment with one stipulation, that buildings eight and nine are to have a minimum front yard setback of 10 feet. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, you confused me just for a second there. Are you saying that you then are recommending approval of the 25 to 12 feet?
That's correct.
For the rest of the buildings?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Mike Crane, Midwest Development Construction, 122 South Phillips. I think Steve did a good job of outlining the issue that we faced with respect to addressing the building so that we met the concerns of the fire department. And the stipulation that the staff has added, we have no problem complying with, the 10-foot as opposed to the eighth that we had originally requested. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have with respect to
Questions for Mike?
Mr. Chair, Mike, I guess in looking through these plans before the meeting tonight, I really struggled with the size of the exhibits.
I have larger ones here if that would help.
Yeah, I think it would be real helpful because I can't tell from this eight-and-a-half by 11, the impact on reducing that, those setbacks. And I would like to have staff maybe walk us through where some of these setbacks occur.
No, you're going to get me confused now. Carrie, you may have to come up and help me walk through this as the questions come. Does that help you?
Just get your main...
Sure.
Carrie Shaw, Beckman Construction, twenty-seven oh sixty-seven Tallgrass Avenue, Sioux Falls.
This plan shows the ten-foot setback that the planning staff has recommended, and so it depicts how we would comply with that.
Shawna, where's the street?
Back to curvier.
So this is just a side yard setback?
No, this is a front yard.
It's classified as a front yard, but when you look at how the project is configured, it's really a side yard.
So this doesn't impact the land between the...
No.
Units as they face each other?
No, it does not.
Need brighter colors.
Oh, this is all the street?
It's all the street.
Including the parking?
Yeah.
Well, this is the street, and that's why you need zero.
That's, yeah, because of the way the...
Pink is the street.
Pink is the street, yellow is the side yard, which is actually classified as a front yard.
Right, yeah. No, ten. Here's the...
So what we're seeing in this image is the, between the units on the right, that's a green way between the row housing, between the townhomes, and so that's green.
Yeah, the yellow, you're a landscape guy.
Yellow will be green, and the large area in between is green as well.
And then Shawna, between the garages, the back of the garage and the front of the home, that's green as well, or is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Are you talking at the top of the page?
Where are you looking?
Yeah, I'm talking at the top. No, no, way up on top.
Up on top. Yeah. On the south, there.
Well, but this, I can't, there now, okay, there you go.
Then we get the right spot, that's green as well.
Green highlight.
Good job. Okay, I wasn't sure, I just couldn't tell.
No, I, I, just look at it an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, it's pretty small.
So these units will have a front yard and a shared backyard.
That's correct.
And that's a row of garages, a small row, and then a large row toward the top?
That's nine, nine units, and that's a ten-units garage stall. And that's a nine-unit store. And that's a twelve-plex.
We've attempted to break the garages up so that you're not doing them all in long rows and getting just a real sterile effect.
Mike and Carrie, when this become an issue for you, did you try to reconfigure it?
We did.
This design, what would the hardship be?
Well, the issue becomes, from the city's perspective, as we were told, the need, there was a need to be able to see the unit from the street on which it's addressed. And one alternative that was offered to us was to take the living units and put them around the perimeter of the project and just run rows of garages down the center. From our perspective, as developers, we felt that this plan that provided more of a staggered, broke the project up into more of a neighborhood feel was much more preferable and added to the long-term viability of the project. And this is a townhouse project. I believe somebody earlier referred to them as twin homes. These are townhouses. Each unit has separate entrance, no hallways, no corridors, they're two-story, two-bedroom, two-bath. They're all rental units.
In lieu of a couple of the rulings we've had tonight, I don't know how some of the other commissioners might feel, but I think, I think the only hardship I can see here would be the number of units you can probably get on this site.
That would, if we were to have to comply to the setback requirements, when we had to go to naming it, doing a private drive, that dramatically changed the feasibility of the project because if we'd had to, if we comply with the current setback rules, because setbacks then start at the outer boundaries of the private drive. If we could have just done a loop through for circulation purposes, we were in compliance with the setback rules that are in place. And this is the solution that was suggested to us by the staff as a means to, to address the concerns of the fire department and to allow us to go forward at a density that made sense for the project.
From a marketing standpoint, you feel real comfortable with this as far as...
I do, I do. I think that this is a project, the way that we're designing it, the way we've worked it through, that will be well-received in the market. It's similar, although not identical, to one that Michael Bender has developed previously in Sioux Falls, Saddle Creek Townhomes. So I, we're very comfortable that this proposal will, that this project will be well-received.
And I'm not saying the sergeant did, Mike, but I have a thought here, and I go, okay, if we improve this, what happens when the next individual has the same situation?
Well, I think you have an issue here because as a community, you're seeing larger developments, higher densities. What we tried to do is provide a maximum amount of green space as well as get a fair density on the site to make it economically viable. And when you start doing that, then you run into conflict with issues such as the fire department and life safety have. So there are some concerns here, and what we're trying to do is, working with the staff, come up with a solution that makes sense and allows both the city to be, meet its goals and us to meet ours as well.
Mr. Chair, Mike, I tend to believe that it's, that we shouldn't only be looking for the hardship, and I, what I sense has happened here is that there's been a discussion, and the development component has identified a hardship, and it affects your layout and your density. But you've put some things back in to offset the ability to reduce the side yard setback. I was under the impression that this was front yard or backyard instead of that little bit of side yard.
We worked very hard to make, provide as much green space for the living, for people's living environment as we can within the...
From a planning standpoint, land planning and just creating a quality environment here, the only couple of things that I see that would have been nice to achieve are those units, those eight-unit buildings on the north and south that are kind of hung out by themselves. They don't have the benefit of that large green spine, that linear park, so to speak, that go down between the other units, and so, again, I understand the hardship in terms of developing acreage of this size and retaining the densities, but at the same time, I want to hope that we continue to see developers that come in and do plans that create a good place for the residents to enjoy that development.
During the course of our deliberations with city staff, we've actually ended up, when we started, we had a site that was three-hundred-and-sixty feet in depth from Forty-First, and if you look at the plan now, it's three-hundred-and-seventy-five. We've actually added another fifteen, fifteen feet in depth by the whole nine-hundred-and-ninety feet of the site to provide, it wasn't necessarily by choice, but it worked out that way, and it ended up, we're able to provide some more green space throughout the whole site by adding that additional fifteen-foot section, so...
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Don't see any, so is there commission action on item thirty-eight?
Mr. Chair, considering the discussion and the detail that we now have at our disposal, I would move for approval of the minor amendment with the single stipulation.
I'm going to second that motion for discussion purposes.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval on item thirty-eight. Commission discussion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this, but I can't help but think of the young builder we just had in here, looking for a five-foot setback between his twin homes that we've said no to, and another builder that was asking for two feet into a backyard that we said no to. This is a fairly major, well, taking the front yards from twenty, if I'm reading this correctly, twenty-five to eight for two of the buildings and twenty-five to twelve for all the other buildings, seems like a fairly major change. I say that, going to support it. I'm just not sure of the consistency on a couple of the other issues, and I realize each situation is different. This is some major footage compared to a couple of the other deals we looked at tonight.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I certainly appreciate what Commissioner Dunlop has to say, and I would respond that I think there were some significant differences. The first applicant, had they been able to provide the plans that indicated how those twin homes are going to sit on the property, how they might be landscaped, and at least in my mind, might have been considered, that request may have been considered differently, at least in my mind. And certainly, the second fellow that asked for the two feet wasn't asking for a lot, but the challenge there for me personally was that he knew, when he came through the planning commission with the final development plan, that he had this issue to deal with and chose not to deal with it until those units were constructed. So I appreciate the fact that we have these requests, and again, I think it's important that it not be judged solely on a hardship, but how the developers improve the design and the concept to offset those barriers, so to speak.
Any other discussion? Okay, on item thirty-eight, there's a motion and a second with one stipulation to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Item thirty-eight is approved. Item thirty-nine is a final development plan in Subarea A, Forty-First Street Ten, Plan Development District, to allow construction of sixty-eight townhome units, phase one, and sixty-six units, phase two, at West Forty-First Street and South Grinnell Avenue. Staff report.
This is the final development plan now for review, given the approval of the minor amendment to allow reduction setback requirements. We are going to look at this planned development district, which allows some multifamily development, and according to PD Subarea Regulations, is to encourage well-planned, efficient urban development and to allow a planned and coordinated mix of land uses which are compatible and harmonious, but previously discouraged by conventional zoning regulations. The intent to construct a hundred-and-thirty-four-unit townhome project in two phases is going to be modified somewhat in the future by what Mike referred to was the need for additional land to the north. Another fifteen feet has been added to the original subarea boundary and will require a rezoning in order to develop that portion of the site. The applicant, if they want to start construction on the project, as you might approve it this evening, will have to phase it so that they do not encroach into the northern portion of the site until that rezoning is approved, and an adjustment is made to the preliminary subdivision plan for property to the north, as has also been approved in the past. I say that because it, again, puts it into perspective of what the developer is dealing with in the way of limited site in a north-south orientation. They are providing a total of two-hundred-and-one parking spaces required, and additionally, a hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces are garages, and they are actually providing a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one parking spots, more than what's required. The buildings are uniformly distributed across the entire site in eight-plex, ten-plex, twelve-plex, and sixteen-plex configurations. That's a little higher than what is normally seen. Landscaping is, requirements are met as indicated on the plan. They're proposing to add a three-foot-high grass berm against the garages along West Forty-First Street to buffer the appearance of those long garages. Building type is one- and two-story attached, single-family units, primarily single-story where the separation between buildings is required to be less than it would be for two-story buildings, so they have actually stepped their buildings down in order to meet that requirement. Exterior wall materials are fiber cement, horizontal siding, and some stone veneer wainscote. Roof pitch and materials are minimum roof pitch with asphalt shingles, and the height is less than the forty-five-feet height maximum. Floor plans are not provided but are indicated on the site plan. It's difficult to see, but does show the stairs and the layout of the building. In Subarea A, the regulations require an outdoor recreation area to be provided. They are showing a twenty-two-by-forty-five-foot patio and adjoining gazebo to meet this requirement. Otherwise, there are sixteen points to be addressed, some of which have not been provided but could easily be added to the plan and meet the requirements. Item number two on the sixteen-point list is a calculated floor area for each structure, and a generic listing of uses within the structure is not provided but can be. Item five, outdoor lighting type and location, except for standard streetlights, and residential style lighting required for the site, excluding parking lot lighting is not provided and could be. The final ground contours have been addressed but are not shown on the plan because they are indicating best management practices for stormwater quality and quantity control. First-floor elevation is not in a flood hazard area and is therefore not required. The documentation of ownership and maintenance responsibility of common open spaces, structure, and private streets has not been provided and would be a legitimate question. Item sixteen just requires a note on the plan to say that they are conforming to the subarea underlying zoning district requirements of RA1, including the minor amendment for setback reduction. Because the application is an allowed use in the subarea and otherwise does conform to the subarea regulations, and the developer intends to apply for the required rezoning and preliminary subdivision plan modifications, and the minor amendment has been approved, staff is recommending approval of the final development with one stipulation, again, that has to do with the setback requirements being adhered to. That concludes staff report. We've had no calls.
Any questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Mike Crane, one-twenty-two South Phillips. There's only one clarification that I would make to Steve's remarks. I believe he said there were only a hundred-and-twenty-eight garages. There will be a garage for every unit. for every unit, the 134. And otherwise, we provide all of the other items that, that he's, he referred to that had not been provided.
Any questions for Mike?
Mr. Chair, Mike, did you just suggest that those other items would be provided?
Yes.
We may want to make that a condition of approval. Some of those items, I think, are important, at least for planning staff to see.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak to this item? See none, so is there commission action? Do you want to make your motion so we can add your stipulation?
Yeah, I could certainly do that. I would make the, the motion to approve the final development plan with a second stipulation, that being the completion of the submittals that are required for final development plan.
I would second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second with the second stipulation being completion of required submittals for final development plan. Is there any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Number 39 is approved with two stipulations. Item 40 is a final development plan in SubArea Q, Platten Valley Plan Development District, to allow construction of apartments at southwest corner of West 85th Street and Louise Avenue. Staff report.
The applicant and owner of this property is John Byrie. It's a 6.5-acre site, currently unimproved. On the north side, there are twin homes in the Platten Valley PD. To the south, there's single-family residential development in the Platten Valley PD. To the east side, it's vacant. That's a future commercial development portion of the PD. And to the west, there are single-family residential development in the, in the PD. Because it's all Platten Valley, we go back to the subarea regulations and the final development plans of adjacent projects. This particular area does not have a final development plan to relate to in the commercial portion of the development. However, there are existing residential, single-family properties adjacent to it. The RA1 district density, area, yard, and height regulations apply. The applicant is proposing to construct nine 15-unit apartment buildings, accessory parking, and detached garages on the lot, and no future subdivision is proposed. This would constitute 108 one-bedroom and 27 two-bedroom apartments in nine two-story apartment buildings for a total of 135 dwelling units. A total of 271 parking spots are proposed, including 93 enclosed garage spaces and 178 parking lot spaces. Access is shown to 85th, West 85th Street, with one access on South Louise through a future commercial development by way of West 86th Street Place, a private roadway easement. Staff notes that a median in South Louise Avenue will allow 86th Street Place only a right-in, right-out onto the street. Subject property does not have the required area for the development of 135 units. Therefore, the applicant is required to apply for a density bonus, which can be approved by the planning director, based on additional parking, enclosed parking, and harmonious design. Those review, or that review is currently in progress, and a determination has not been made yet as to whether it meets the density requirements. The property has frontage on West 86th Street Place, excuse me, West 86th Place, a private roadway easement 30-foot wide, currently unimproved, connecting the subject property to South Louise Avenue. If that is proposed to be used as access to the site, it will have to be paved and connected. A detention pond BMP is located at the northwest corner of the property. A minimum front yard setback of 25 feet from the private road is required, as well as 100-foot frontage on any road, uh, frontage. And so that particular condition will have to be addressed by the applicant with zoning and building services. Otherwise, they would not be able to get their building permit. I believe there is some discussion going on, on that matter right now, but if it does affect the layout, site plan, and design, the applicant should address that this evening. The minimum, again, the minimum distance between two-story and adjacent structures is 30 feet. The building locations are next to existing residential development. We did have some calls from neighbors in the neighborhood who, when, found out that there were only two-story apartment buildings, they were not concerned. They just didn't want three-story apartment buildings. And then later this afternoon, I did get a call from a, a neighbor who indicated that there was a, not a petition, but a letter circulating in the neighborhood requesting that neighbors attend the meeting tonight and voice their concern about property values. That particular neighbor was not able to attend, and he was not concerned about property values. He wanted me to express to you, his only concern was that we provide adequate buffering with landscaping and screen fencing. The plan does show adequate, or does show plant material schedule and a random selection of a variety of trees, including a larger number of shrub-type, what they call thornless honeysuckle, which is not a tree, it's a, it's a shrub. And if it's a random selection, if they put all shrubs in, we wouldn't meet the requirement. So staff would like to include the stipulation that only 25% could be conifers, ornamentals, or this honeysuckle, honey locust type variety. Building design, two-story residential, exterior wall materials appear to be residential lap siding, roof pitch standard with shingles, height less than 45 feet. Floor plans are provided, indicating 15 upper and lower-level apartments in each building, a secure entry, and patios and decks for each unit. The applicant has constructed these at other places in town and can address the quality with you this evening. Because there is not a public park or trail nearby, the applicant should consider providing some usable open space or recreational amenities on-site. The neighborhood, the applicant has talked to people in the neighborhood, I know because they called and said that he had, and trash enclosure, outdoor storage, design has not been provided. Of the 16 points required for the final development plan, there are two that, or excuse me, four that could be added to the plans as submitted. That's number five, on the style of lighting, number 13, the responsibility of ownership and maintenance for common open spaces, structures, including private streets, and that would mainly be 86th Place going out to Louise. Number 14, the required open space for recreation is not identified on the plan. And number 16, that they are going to conform to the requirements of the RA1 zoning district in the subarea regulations. Because the subject application does accommodate land use transition from commercial to low-density residential and otherwise conforms to the subarea regs, staff is recommending approval with four stipulations. One, that the density bonus application be approved by the planning director. Two, that they provide public sidewalk on West 85th Street right-of-way. Three, provide pedestrian walkway connections from apartment buildings to public sidewalks on West 85th and South Louise. And four, that trees are not allowed in the sanitary sewer easement. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, did you say this plan is meeting the front yard requirement?
It is. If the private road is extended into the development in order to meet the 100-foot frontage requirement on that street, then there's a possibility it would not meet the setback requirements if the plan is maintained as presented. They would have to adjust the plan to meet the 25-foot setback requirement off of the private street. I believe the applicant has been discussing that situation with zoners and planner, or building services people, and I, I'm not sure how that's being resolved.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
John Byrie, 5101 South Sweetwater Place, Sioux Falls. I'm here to answer any questions.
John, did you realize you were number 40 tonight?
I didn't realize I was number 40.
Any questions for John?
Mr. Chair, John, I guess, real quick, like, that setback issue, do you have any updates on how that's going to be resolved?
The engineers have suggested there's a, there's a sewer easement that runs along the east side of the property, and, and they say that that extends through, the concern that zoning has is that they say 86th Street Place is an actual street. We're saying that it isn't necessarily a street, it's a private entrance to this parcel. So there's a little disagreement there. But what we're also saying is there is an easement that runs on the east side of the property that runs through 86th Street. So we could say that 86th Street Place stopped at that easement, which would give us the required setback from, from a frontage standpoint.
Who's going to make that determination?
Well, that'll have to be determined by zoning.
Planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning. And if we have to do some, some replating so that 86th Street doesn't abut the property, you know, that's an option too.
And then the, the items that are missing in the submittal, the planned submittal, you could provide those as well.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? I don't see any, so is there commission action?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item number 40 with a four stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 40 is approved with four stipulations. Item 41 is a final development plan in SubArea C, Avira McKenon Plan Development District, to allow construction of an extended stay hotel at South Seven, Seventh Avenue and East 24th Street. Staff report.
If the applicant is in the outer waiting room, they should come in right away. But item 41 is an application from Garrett Peters, and representing Avira McKenon Hospital and University Health Center. I've been discussing the project with the project architects who are from out of town. And I, and the latest discussion was that they would be here to answer questions. Perhaps they, for some reason, were not able to attend the meeting this evening. There are some questions that need to be answered about the parking requirements for the project. Therefore, I would recommend deferral until the applicant is available to answer those.
Thank you, Steve. Is there, I, I'll, I'll call for a, call for the applicant, don't see anybody, but is there commission action to defer this item?
I move to defer item 41.
Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on item 41 to defer to the next meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 41 is deferred to the October meeting. Item 42 is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is adjourn, or, meeting is adjourned.
I understand what that's for, but we did nothing tonight to send a message to the, to that, we did nothing tonight, and I, and I'm not just, I'm not totally disagreeing with that landing decision. We did nothing tonight to send a message to the developer that we didn't allow [inaudible].
We approved 100 acres of multifamily, and then we're taking residential land and multifamily. We approved, in the, that peeling land-